Well, good morning everybody. Welcome to February and hope everybody enjoys the spring weather we're having this week. I'd ask Ms. Legay to take the roll call please.
Yep, thank you Warden Marriott. Counselor Agar.
President.
Counselor McEwen for Counselor Atkinson.
President.
Counselor Bushy.
I'm here.
Counselor Bradley. Counselor Bradley. Counselor Broad.
Present.
Counselor Case.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Dennis.
Present.
Counselor Ferguson.
Present.
Counselor Hand.
Present.
Counselor Lucely.
Present.
Warden Marriott.
Present.
Counselor McRoberts.
Present.
Counselor Miller.
Present.
Counselor Sageman.
Present.
Counselor Veen. Counselor Veen. And Deputy Warden White.
President.
Your quorum.
Thank you Ms. Legay. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoawa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Inishna Bag. It is through the connection of the Inishna Bag with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize their unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I'd ask if there's any disclosures of pecuniary interest at this time, or you may bring them up during the meeting as well. Seeing none at this time, I'll take a motion to go in camera. Today we'll be staying here because of the construction moved by Counselor Lucely and seconded by Counselor Broad. All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you.
Welcome back. Good morning to those who have arrived in between closed session and now. I ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I would ask Ms. Legay to rise and report motions of the in camera, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. I can report that Lampton County Council met in camera this morning for approximately four minutes to address a few matters. First being to review and approve the Lampton County Council closed session minutes dated November 29th, 2023, which included providing instructions regarding collective bargaining with Uniform 302, and to receive a report concerning information systems network security. The Board of Health reviewed and approved their closed session minutes dated November 29th, 2023, which included providing instructions regarding negotiations between Lampton Public Health and a third party. Secondly, County Council met in closed session this morning to review and approve the committee of the whole closed session minutes of January 17th, 2024. That included providing instructions regarding collective bargaining with QP 2557. County Council received a report regarding collective bargaining with Uniform 444. And lastly, Council received a report concerning property information that is subject to a proposed acquisition and proposed disposition of land in the city of Sarnia. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, delegations. I'd look for a motion to invite presenters, moved by Councillor Dennis and seconded by Councillor Loosely, all in favor. That's carried. Our delegation today, we have one, that's Bev McDougall, former city county councillor and warden of Lampton County, would like to speak to County Council regarding the funding of social services programs, including housing. In addition, the delegate would like to speak to the positive impact of social service programs like community outreach workers, emergency medical services and public health workers, and support the unhoused in the inner city of Sarnia, where we live, and the housing programs for low-income people throughout Lampton County. Welcome, Bev.
Good morning, Warden Marriott, members of County Council and staff. I am presenting this morning on behalf of our household as 45-year residents of Sarnia's downtown, to speak to programs of Lampton County's social services, and in particular, its housing programs supporting vulnerable people living on the street. First, I wish to say unequivocally that our household supports the Housing First philosophy of Lampton County. We witness every day the struggle of precariously housed people living at or on the street in our neighborhood. We know, as you do, that a bed in a shelter, transitional housing, or couch surfing with friends does not make for stable housing, that every person needs to feel safe and provide breathing room to attend to matters like finding employment or in advance of readiness for employment, to deal with mental health, addiction, and other problems nearly always rooted in trauma. Past securing stable and for many, supportive housing solutions, utility, community supports like soup kitchens and food banks keep people fed. Rent and utility banks provide additional monetary supports so that people can hang on to their housing. Keeping people housed is paramount to the health of our community. Please don't scale back on homelessness prevention programs in these times. Too many people are barely hanging on these days. We hear about that daily in the media. Our household wishes to say a sincere thank you for Lampton County programs and partnerships that are making a visible difference on the ground in Sarnia's inner city. We are particularly grateful for the community outreach workers connected to homelessness prevention, who are working in partnership with Lampton Public Health, Lampton EMS, police, fire, and other community partners, too many to mention, to support the unhoused. We watch every single day the struggle of lost people sleeping rough. A broad number of some 60 known individuals sleeping on and off our downtown streets during any given month, furiously protecting or dragging around all that they own for fear of it being stolen. Surely, there is an answer in small, lockable studio apartments or other solutions, barely larger than the tents in which some of them are already living on a good night. Around this, we have taken time to understand the reasons why people choose to live outside rather than going into a shelter. Many are struggling with addiction, mental health, and outcomes of trauma in their lives. For many, staying outside is preferable to being inside where they don't feel they can trust others living in congregate settings. We also applaud your partnership with the Inn of the Good Shepherd to operate in out-of-the-cold emergency low-barrier shelter beside your housing and homelessness resource center this past winter. We, along with many other downtown neighbors, rest easier knowing that there is somewhere for the unhoused to go during the week and middle hours of the day to get and stay warm, where they can get to workers and programs to secure permanent housing. Our household is equally happy to read about seed funding amounting to $794,000 for five projects during 2023 and 2024, with capacity to construct between 152 and 177 new housing units in Sarnia, beyond 40 units to be built by the Ontario Aboriginal Housing Corporation slated to begin construction this year. We have also been following media coverage of your work with Flourish in partnership with Indwell that is assisting in drafting a multi-year portfolio-scale strategic affordable and supportive housing development plan to address our local housing crisis. We are happy to read that efforts are already underway to meet with the province to access senior government funding for both the capital and operating costs associated with this plan. Now, it would appear your challenge will be to find the $30 million seed, Flourish is estimating as the county's portion of this ambitious plan totaling $143 million to build 490 units needed to support Lampton's housing crisis. Rome wasn't built in a day, and neither will 490 units of housing be built overnight. It is not fair when people say the county isn't doing enough. Building housing is not something municipal government can do on its own, and certainly not in these times, nor should any of your existing housing or homelessness prevention programs be sacrificed to take on any of this without help from senior levels of government. And I come here today to say that. Please don't lose the program's strength that already exists in my municipality and others about the county of Lampton. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this morning to bring the real-life experience from our household that has lived for so many years opposite those struggling to survive without housing in our community. While we encourage you to invest in new and innovative housing solutions, we felt it important to say thanks for the hard-working county employees out there on the street for what they are doing, rather than complain about work still to be done to provide vital housing supports to badly broken people who need far more than a home to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Are you open to questions? If there's any. Councillor Agar, please.
Thanks, Bev. It's not really a question, just a comment. I appreciate you coming here. Thank you. Social Services, all the County Council, everybody out here is trying their best, and we are, everybody's worried about it, and we want to see this accomplished. I'd just like to comment, there's been many emails in the last, I don't know, a few weeks or whatever, and it seems to be the word out there is we have a $38 million war chest out here at the county. We do not. And if you're taking $700,000 off of around $3 million, that's what's there. That's not a lot of housing. So, like you said, we have to find other ways to get creative. So I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Really, I really appreciate you bringing up that point because even as I have looked across the divisions and budget numbers that any of us can see as members of the public, that it's really easy to say there's little hidden pots of money here or there, but I know from the 15 years I spent as a part of this functioning body that isn't there. And I also know that unless you get senior government funding, all these plans are going to be impossible to do. So, kudos to all of you for the work that you're doing, and thank you, Councillor Agar, for raising that really important issue. I left it out in my presentation.
Okay, Councillor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. You mentioned 490. Where did that number come from in terms of homes needed?
Last night, as I was putting the finishing touches on my presentation, I took some time to look at the presentation that you're going to hear later on this morning that speaks to 490 units. We know ourselves that we see 10 to 20 people trolling about our neighborhood every single day, that they're part of 60 people who every month are in and out of housing. We also, I also took the time to read some of the reports, Councillor Dennis, that you people have been reading for the past few months, last couple of years, about a need for upwards to 313 housing units I know for that are needed. The 490 I read about last night, I think bundles all of the known housing needs to this point in time, so that it's not necessarily the unhoused for which we need 490 units. It's across many different forms of housing, and that's for all of you folks to know and deal with.
Here, when I talk about affordable housing, I'm talking about everyone. I'm not just talking about the people that are having tough, everybody's having tough times right now. I'm talking about the working poor also. I'm talking about people that don't qualify for social benefits. I'm not talking about people, I'm talking about people that are suffering by no fault of their own, people that are trying to make a go of it, working two or three jobs. I attended an event on the weekend, a dentist offering free dental care for his working poor, people that don't qualify for dental benefits because they don't get social benefits. And people lined up at six in the morning. He saw over 100 patients that day. So the thing is, that number seems low to me. The thing is, if we're just going to cater to people that have, you know, again, people might criticize me for this, for people that have made bad decisions and have been stuck in the system, and that have, you know, like, I understand that the last eight years have been horrible under the federal government. There's been a lot of immigrants that have come into the country that have exaggerated or exacerbated the--
Let's keep it local, Councillor Dennis.
Well, anyways, there's a reason why the housing crisis has come to this point. But the fact of the matter is, is people want to blame government for this problem, or the local level for this problem, and sometimes they should point the finger at themselves. And the thing is, is we can only do what we can do. But as far as taking care of the affordable housing is concerned, is there's people that are working hard, and everybody needs to be taken care of, not just the people that are, you know, that have made bad decisions over and over and over again. It's not right.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Dennis. Deputy Warden White.
Thank you. Bev, thank you for your presentation today. I appreciate you highlighting some of the positives. I know it's very difficult sometimes to focus on the convergence of all of the issues at play here, and I think you've highlighted those very well. While we continue to see a rise in the demand and need for service that is quite frankly outpacing our ability to keep up right now, you've also highlighted the fact that the county has come a long way and continues to do a lot towards homelessness prevention, one item that Councillor Dennis pointed out there, which the county does address very well, in my opinion. One specific question I have, though, to highlight out of what you discussed, is you talked about something for the challenges we face with those who choose not to accept the spaces available in the shelter system, because they're not choose to, are unable to accept that help. They're difficult to house, and the need to create something that would be perhaps better than the tent that they're in, but would perhaps provide them the safety, the emotional safety, the psychological safety that they need currently at the state that they're living in. What might that look like in your mind, and where would you best see that serve our community? Would it be in the neighborhood that you live in? Or would it be somewhere else closer to services? I'll leave that with you.
I have spoken both to City Council in the past, Councillor White, as you know, and in our lived experience, we know that for someone who is living in a tent, that may only be 10 feet by 10 feet if it was a big tent. It doesn't need to be a lot more than that to keep people safe. What we see on the street are people holding very tight to what they have. And what I would like to see, and my husband would like to see, is some place for these people to be able to lock a door, to be able to have their own personal washroom facility, to be able to stay warm in the winter and cool in the summer. But as I reviewed the January, your January 17th, 2024 report, we can read of upwards of 50% of the people who are living on the street are absolutely not going to go into a shelter. Shelter life is a first step, and it can't be the end step for anybody. Where does that need to be? Our neighborhood is already oversubscribed with services for people struggling. And for us, as this has been discussed in the last few months in our community, what's the point of building housing if it's not close to other services and things that people need? There are better places in the city in our mind that are close to a grocery store. You know, for those of us who have cars, that we can jump into them and go do a big grocery shop, it's like, these are simple essentials for anybody. And for us, if it was more evenly distributed throughout our communities, that's what I always liked about the Habitat program. Habitat for Humanity distributes people all over our communities so that we debunk this notion of poor people that, you know, are broken people. They're citizens. They need to be part of our community, but not all in one spot. And to Councillor Dennis's point about people precariously hanging on to mortgages, I also see that every day downtown. There's a lot of people who are barely getting by. So, all these programs you do, they're vital. New builds, studio units, you know, there is discussion about tiny homes. Personally, from what I know, if you could build a structure that could house multiple people, that had supports that either came in day by day, or it could be with offices in there to support people who are getting back on their feet, that's what I think is needed past what's already being done. But I'm also mindful of that $143 million price tag. And you're not-- of that $143 million price tag. And you're not going to do it all at once. That's why I felt it important this morning to talk about these five projects that you've already got seed monies invested in, because that's going to get between 150 and 200 units up and off the ground. And every time you make units like that, it frees housing down along the chain. For me, I could cry six times a day, looking at people just barely existing. And that's not enough. It's not enough for me. It's not enough for you. And we can't keep our neighborhood strong, and we can't keep people with hope, when every place you look, you see trouble.
Okay, we'll end it there. Thank you, Bev, again, for your presentation. Moving on to item number nine, presentations. Our first presenter is Rachel Gilmore, lead consultant. Rachel Gilmore Consulting would like to present a summary of the renewed Child Care and Early Years Five Service, Five Year Service Plan, 2024 to 2028, including highlights summarizing the progress from the 2020 to 2023 plan, as well as newly identified community priorities and key performance indicators moving forward. I believe Rachel is on Zoom. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you, Warden. I presume right now folks can see the presentation.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for that confirmation. It is a pleasure to present to council today. As you mentioned, my name is Rachel Gilmore, and I have been the consultant on the community engagement and drafting of this plan. I've brought to this work 25 years of experience in child and youth services. I have served as a founder and executive director of an early learning and childcare facility, and I have consulted government at local, provincial, national levels on a wide range of priorities for children and their families. I also would like to take this opportunity to recognize and acknowledge this community engagement process took place in Lampton County, which is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odida, and Potami peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bank. The County of Lampton Children's Services Department acknowledges and appreciates the wisdom, guidance, support, and leadership from our indigenous community partners and elders, and our commitment to honor the calls to action within the Truth and Reconciliation--
Excuse me, Rachel, we're having trouble with the presentation. We only see half of it right now.
Oh, let's see.
There we go. That's better.
How's that?
Thank you.
No problem. Let me just move a few of my own things around here and make sure we can all see what we need. Sorry, bear with me. Is that still working for you?
We're still on the first slide, but we can--
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't progressed it yet. So this presentation, as we get into it, is going to be a brief overview of the very detailed plan which has been provided to council. I'm going to be providing a high-level overview of the process which supported the development of the plan, the identified four priority areas of work, and the accountabilities for follow-up. So this is a good time to remind everyone that what really the County of Lampton's role is. Under the Childcare and Early Years Act, the County of Lampton is a consolidated municipal service manager, a CMSM, and you're designated to manage the childcare and early years services across the County of Lampton. The Act itself outlines that each service manager shall have a childcare and early years service plan for its own area. So the plan should be reviewed and approved by council, reflecting the local priorities and being in alignment with the provincial interests and policy statements. So to review, in 2022, 2023, the Ministry of Education released a new access and inclusion framework. Lampton's renewed five-year childcare and early years plan, this new one we're talking about, should align with the new provincial access and inclusion framework. The system's planning and collaboration should occur through a lens of change and growth that support the needs of a diverse and underserved populations, vulnerable families, children with special needs, low-income families, as we've heard, spoken about already this morning, Francophone, indigenous, Black, and other racialized or newcomer communities. Fundamentally, all the priorities and actions of the service plan should be guided by the principles of access and inclusion, to ensure that every child and family has what they need to succeed by removing the barriers that disadvantage some groups over others. Children should have equitable access to early learning opportunities that support them in realizing their capacity as engaged learners who are competent, capable of complex thinking, curious, and rich in their potential. The province of Ontario did release this new access and inclusion framework as part of their plan to expand the number of available childcare spaces within Ontario under the new federal agreement, the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Agreement, often referred to as SEWELK. So the framework is intended to guide municipalities in creating their growth plan that target the areas which have been historically underserved, such as rural or remote communities. Plans need to consider the needs of all the children in all the communities. So as we got going, community engagement is the cornerstone of building a service plan that reflects the needs of families, children, and the community partners to achieve the long-term goals and sustainable outcomes. Opportunities to inform the development of this plan were offered both in person and virtually through group, team, and individual sessions to childcare service providers, children's services internal staff, and community partner organizations. And I would actually like to note at this juncture as well, that, excuse me, that the process itself provided to be a highlight of success. Management could have taken the direction with the existing effective strategy to simply add on to it or appendix it with the new provincial priorities, but instead made the decision to conduct a robust community engagement process. This allowed all voices to be heard, and very deep, rich conversations took place. And now the community partners are prepared to mobilize, working together on the new priorities in an innovative and collaborative way, once council has approved this plan. And within this consultation process, I also need to highlight for you that the Lampton Child and Family Network members were instrumental in the development of the plan through multiple dedicated sessions, as well as providing feedback to the priorities and outcomes as they came together. The Lampton Child and Family Network is a strategic, collaborative, and integrated planning infrastructure, which allows the members to work together and independently to meet the shared vision of the network to improve the present and future well-being of children and families. So to highlight those activities for you, all 11 municipalities within the County of Lampton were given the opportunity to provide input from their regions. Direct engagement with Lampton families through in-person and virtual surveys provided the foundation of the plan's goals and priorities. Individual consultations were held with indigenous-led childcare, Francophone-led childcare, school boards, superintendents, local immigration partnership staff as well. And surveys were included, engaging with special needs families, and 217 early years families took part in that. The main consultation questions that we were asking were around, you know, what does your ideal childcare and early years system include? What is most important to you? So I'd like to read you the vision statement that became the foundation as we developed the plan, and that is that the County of Lampton, in collaboration with early years and community partners, commits to a childcare and early years system that places children and families at the center of all decisions, a system where all children and families have access to an inclusive system that supports learning, development, and overall well-being. So as we move to our priorities then, our first one, oh, I'm sorry here, we just, let me just update you. You can see here the vision is in the center of all of these decisions, and it was based on, as I mentioned, the feedback from staff, community partners, parents, caregivers, to inform the four key priorities of what will now be the 2024 to 2028 childcare and early years system plan. So as we look at the first priority, that being access to service, this is access to service to create childcare and earlier services that are accessible, inclusive, and dependable. The high-level goals here are to increase the availability of high-quality, inclusive, and affordable licensed childcare spaces, and to build and expand the partnerships to place available resources and services where the demand exists. And you can find more details about this priority, actually, on page 19 of the detailed plan that you have. Our next priority is around workforce retention and recruitment to support and attract and retain early years and childcare workforce. The goals at the high level of this priority are to grow the number of qualified staff in childcare and early years to increase access to licensed childcare for families, and to enhance the access to opportunities that promote retention, including professional development and training. When you refer to your detailed plan, you'll find more on this priority on page 21. The third priority is a collaborative system planning, and this is to continue working together through ongoing collaboration to deliver responsive services that reflect the needs of children and families. The high-level goals of this priority are to collaborate, to build a more seamless system that is easy for families to navigate. It's an ongoing engagement with families, caregivers, service providers, and community partners, which is critical to inform a responsive earlier system that meets diverse and evolving needs. More about this strategy and this priority you can find on page 22 of the detailed plan. And the fourth priority, building community capacity. Building capacity in parents, caregivers themselves, and professionals to support children's development. The high-level goals here are around building capacity of childcare and early years professionals so that they can support the children and their families, and a system that supports parents and caregivers to understand and support their children's developmental needs. More about this strategy and how we will get there is on, excuse me, is on page 23 of your plan. So when it comes to the accountability, being able to be flexible, being able to be responsive, there will be reporting on the progress of this plan, which is imperative to the success of it, because this is what will elevate all the steps that are being taken towards achieving all of the goals and objectives. So at the midpoint and at the end of the implementation plan, a progress report will be completed outlining the progress that has been made and the results that have been achieved. So as we end, I will again say that this is an opportunity for the County of Lampton's Children's Services to leverage its position as a service manager to collaborate, build effective partnerships, and support the early years partners that are working together to build services that are accessible, inclusive, affordable, and of high quality that benefit all the children and families across Lampton County. Ending, I think it's great to share the words of the now-departed Honorable Senator Landon Pearson. She was often referred to as Canada's senator on all children's issue, children, the children's senator as she was known. And she shared the quote that "every child is a new chance for the whole human race." So I thank you, Warden, and council for your time, and offer, if there's any questions, I myself can answer, or defer to the children's services staff to support the conversation.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any questions, council? Councillor Bradley, please.
Thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions. I didn't hear anything specific. I heard a lot of generalities about daycare, and I'm sure it's a cookie cutter presentation. There was a very, it wasn't a great response last time the county went out and looked for private operators, and I understand that's a national issue. There has been a very strong activist group of parents who have been advocating for the county to get back into daycare, as it was 10 years ago. What's your position on public-run daycare by municipal organizations?
Rachel, please.
Well, thank you for the question. I'll sort of make a broad statement for you, and then defer to children's services staff to provide maybe more detail. From the consultancy lens and reviewing all of the legislation and the priorities and the obligations of the county, I can share that it is the preference of the provincial government to prefer a community-based, you know, not-for-profit grassroots responses to childcare needs rather than municipal government. So that's a broad sweeping answer, but for any more specifics, I'll defer to the children's services staff.
Any other question, any other questions for Rachel? Councillor Han.
Sorry, is the before-school program part of this overall children's program?
Absolutely, councillor. I think the entire childcare and early learning service system, what you're asking for in terms of a priority on before-school care is definitely something that came up through the consultative process. And it speaks to the need for robust retention and recruitment for the workforce, because often there are split shifts, there are morning hours, there are after-school hours, there are daytime hours, and that makes the complexities of the labor force, all that more challenging. And geography, right? Multiple sites where a before-school shift may be at one location and after-school hours may be at another. So, so yes, the plan and the consultation includes a great deal of detail to ensure that we can address the need for before-school care as a component and a key area to serve families and children for all the hours of the day.
Okay, I had a specific question. My grandchildren were in preschool program, before-school program, and they've lost that opportunity now because they had to change the start time to 7:30. They were going at 7:10, for the mother to be at work at 7:30, and the letter they received in December said it was on account of resources, that they couldn't staff at 7:00 anymore. So I just wondered, is this a temporary situation? Can we look forward to that? You know, I see, you know, resourcing is an issue, so that, I mean, we have a personal problem. We'll work it out, but for all the other families that were affected, I have a concern. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, councillor. And I think, as you reference it, as a personal concern, there would be multiple other families who receive the same letter and would have varying degrees of support and resources to make that shift and accommodate what feels sometimes very small of a 20-minute difference in day can make a major impact on a family if there's a parent needing to get to work and labor and their own commitments to start their day to support their family. I can tell you from the consultation conversations that took place, that the concern you have is absolutely a priority amongst the service providers. I don't think anyone would have wanted to issue that letter to you. And so it's definitely something that is high in terms of the accessibility of the childcare system, right? Time of day is an element of accessibility. And so it is woven through, throughout the dialogue, throughout the conversation, throughout the plan, and the strategies to move forward. And I hope for your family and the others that it is something that can be, at least for that site affected, ratified quickly.
Okay, Councillor Bradley.
Perhaps I didn't ask the question properly. Do you see a role for the county in providing direct daycare center services as they did up till about 10 years ago? You are giving us this guidance for the next five years, asking us to adopt this plan. Do you see that role, and did you pick that up in your-- Do you see that role and did you pick that up in your consultations? I would just like you to answer that question.
Certainly, Counselor. So maybe I'll, I'll reframe the information so it's, it's, it's clear. Um, the role of the Lampton County in, in terms of being a service manager of, of the plan is to enable the community, um, to follow the legislation of the province. So there is a preference from the provincial legislation, uh, to have community-based, not-for-profit, or charitable organization-run childcare services rather than municipal government. Uh, so that, that is the direction from the province. That, that is the direction that is being rolled out at, at levels across all of Ontario.
And as you would know, that position has changed over the years depending on the government of the day. So you still haven't answered the question. Is there a role that the county wants to take it on as it relates to providing daycare services as they did in the past? They can do that, correct?
I again will defer that to the Children's Services staff to, to answer at the particular level. My role is to provide the lens through your legislative accountabilities and the preference of the guideline and the framework given from the province and the federal agreements that you have.
Okay, Counselor Broad, please.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. I guess it's just more of a comment than anything. Uh, Don Yefimia borders with Chatham, Kent, Middlesex County. Um, and our problem is that, uh, we've got people that have to go to Chatham, Kent, and Middlesex for their childcare services because there's nothing available in our area. Their taxes goes to pay the services in Lampton County. But there always seems to be problems because once they head into another territory that, uh, with the services that's provided and the cost and everything that's about it. My only comment would be is when the county is looking at partnerships, would they please take into the effect that we do have, uh, surrounding communities that butt up to these other areas and that that needs to be taken into effect under the partnership? Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll thank you, Rachel, for your presentation again. And, uh, we'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Our second present presenter is Graham Cubitt. President Flourish would like to speak to County Council regarding an action plan that seeks to end homelessness and address the housing crisis through supportive and affordable housing development in Lampton County. Welcome, Mr. Cubitt.
Thank you very much, Warden Marriott. And, uh, and Counsel, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today and to share this report. Uh, I really have appreciated working with staff and just commend the work that you've continued to do, uh, on this complex issue. My name is Graham Cubitt. I am the president of Flourish. We are a not-for-profit, social purpose, real estate development service company, uh, established to deploy the accumulated experience of indwell in tackling affordable housing and particularly supportive housing uh, needs across our province. So I, I do want to echo the, the positive sentiments of the first presenter today, uh, saying thank you to you for, for tackling these issues and looking for solutions. Uh, because homelessness isn't solving itself and, uh, it is a complicated issue. And so these are difficult decisions and deliberations you make. So I hope that our report today will provide some, some valuable insight for you. Oh, there we go. Um, so Flourish's vision is hope and homes for all. That's the, uh, starting point from which we work. We really are committed to, uh, offering our clients, which includes a number of municipalities, not-for-profits, charities. Um, the, the value of our experience over the last, uh, about 15 years developing affordable and particularly supportive housing. Our team has been able to work, uh, on a number of indwell projects, obviously, but also with other not-for, not-for-profits uh, towards establishing and even indeed constructing, uh, over 1,200 units of, of new affordable housing. And it's through that experience that, uh, I hope that our, uh, report comes to you with a level of credibility that says if we, if we can work in this direction, we can achieve these kinds of results. I mean, there's no, there's no disagreement. We have consensus that there's a homelessness crisis. We've heard about this. We see people destitute on our streets. We know that there's a lack of safe, affordable, uh, housing options, physical stock, uh, but also the, the services available. We know that things like the opioid crisis continue to exacerbate this issue and, and increase spiraling, uh, complexity for many people who experience this. We know that community housing waiting lists are, are increasing. I believe that when we started the conversation with staff, the number was around seven, 760 people on the, on the access to housing waitlist. And, you know, midway through, I think it's over 800 now that are on that waiting list. And we see those, those numbers continue to grow. We know that social cohesion is under stress. We see this as, uh, our personal experience in our neighborhoods. We see Facebook groups, uh, many sort of like issues of, of really pulling, pulling apart that social fabric that we all rely on. So how do we move forward? Uh, we also heard in the earlier presentation that traditional emergency-type shelters are not always what people are looking for. Uh, and so what do we do when people don't, don't have uh, the kind of housing that they need within the community? It's out of that that we start asking ourselves a lot of questions, but really we're looking towards this idea of building a spectrum of supportive housing, and that's really the key. We ask ourselves things like, you know, what solutions are actually needed to meet this challenge? The challenges that we identify locally? What resources do we have available to us? If we all come to the conversation open-handed, what does, what is it that we're offering? Whether it's a service club, a church group, uh, individuals, or you as our civic leaders and the level of governments that you represent? Um, how can we achieve multiple objectives at once? This is also a key point because we know that we have many competing demands. You know, servicing is one thing, climate crisis is another thing, homelessness. Can these interrelate? And can we make one decision that actually helps us achieve multiple ends? The kind of investments that we make are, are real. Housing is costly in the Canadian context. Uh, so when we make these decisions, where are we going to find all the resources that we need? And we know that one size doesn't fit all. And so how do we work through that? I'll briefly outline, uh, a little bit of language that's used in our report when it comes to supportive housing. Uh, the idea of building permanent housing. So it's real apartments, not emergency shelters, and supports that are linked to that housing. So ideally embedded right within the housing program and the operations of that housing program. Ideally, not just simply a, a case management or, or sort of a, an ad hoc approach of delivering services to a tenant, but hopefully ideally putting the supports within the housing program. I think that that really is the longest-term success. I use the language that indwell's familiar with, the idea of a specialized support. So a very focused, uh, specific healthcare intervention is for those who are most precarious, most highest acuity would be a type of language that's used locally. Uh, and then as people move towards stability, using maybe an enhanced support model. So it's the same kinds of supports, but delivered to people with lower acuity. So you can use the same staff team for a larger population. And then the idea of standard support. So, uh, mental health, addictions are not sort of a, a one-time thing and you get over it and you move on with life necessarily. But how do we make sure that people, when, like, when, when people have achieved recovery of a certain extent, when people have achieved stability, how do we make sure that the, the gaps of life stay narrow? Is that they don't fall back through them? And that standard support that's available onsite in day in, day out, uh, is a very sustainable kind of support. But, uh, one, one might call it a standard level of support. So in the context of, of action, so there's, there's really, we want to move to action. Uh, we looked at five sites that, uh, staff identified. We looked at the housing waitlist. We looked at the housing homelessness targets that you have. Um, you know, particularly the by-name priority list, which is provincially mandated that you maintain and sort of reference and sort of show progress on. And then how do we develop various physical sites, physical plans and business plans to go with those? Uh, and then where do you find the money for that? So the next, uh, five or six pages, uh, really are related to, uh, or slides are related to what that can look like in sort of outlining the larger report. When we looked at the sites that staff identified, we see an opportunity for about 300 units of supportive housing. And this was specifically tackled the by-name priority list. So those who've been identified as homeless and the needs that they have identified, um, uh, through that, that acuity scale. We also see the opportunity to build, uh, affordable units. And we're using CMHC's, uh, co-investment program definition of, of affordability. Uh, and that program now allows sort of mixed rental, uh, buildings that have 40% at a deeply affordable rate and then 60% at more of a market rate. So this is the strategy. And then total, this would come out to 490 units identified within our report on these city, uh, or, or staff-identified sites. We heard earlier though that that number is much larger. You need it maybe in the 800s. Uh, so this would be the start of a momentum in that direction. Specifically, we looked at the Victoria site, uh, in Sarnia. Uh, the opportunity to use that municipal parking lot for supportive housing. It holds true potential, really excellent location. When we looked at that, we said, okay, from our experience, we could see two buildings, uh, would be ideal here. Uh, multiple program models within that. There's sort of a scenario A, uh, or scenario one might be sort of an enhanced program with affordable and market units on the building on the right there, sort of L-shaped building. And then that, uh, building B, apartment B, would be sort of that U-shaped building. Uh, could also have, uh, two different program models within it. Um, I won't get into sort of like all the layers of detail of what that means, but it's in the report. And that collectively could yield around 260, well, 267 units, uh, is what we drew out here. Um, but the idea that that would be, uh, a full spectrum of supportive housing available onsite. There are a couple other sites that we did look at as well. Uh, you know, municipal sites or municipally identified sites, as I say. And this is really the scenario that, uh, we think is the, the route to get there. Uh, we know that there's different types of programs and different types of, uh, projects with different business models. Enhanced programs, specialized programs are more expensive to run. You have a higher complement of staff for a lower tenant population, so lower rents. And that's what you really need to have the, the province's clear investment, both Ministry of Health and Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. But then as you move towards that longer term, that stable, uh, standard support type housing, uh, there's an opportunity to use CMHC, Canada Mortgage and Housing, and, and their programs, uh, to play a, a heavier role within, uh, the funding model. So you can see the yellow in each of these graphs is, it would be CMHC grants. Um, the darker blue would be County of Lampton, uh, investment, uh, sort of like capital equity. Uh, the, the gray would be sort of municipal, uh, municipal debt that you might take on, but take on in a way that's sustainable, not using the levy to finance that debt, but using the business plan of the particular housing model to cover the costs of that, of that infrastructure. We did make the assumption that all of these projects would be municipally owned so that these would remain on the, uh, on the balance sheet of, of the municipality in terms of equity. The key for the, uh, dealing with homelessness and supportive housing particularly is that your tenants, uh, really have very, very little income. ODSP, OW would be typical incomes. And so finding the resources, uh, to cover the cost of construction has to come from, has to come from public sources. We, we don't want to see that, uh, be onerous on the municipal level. So attracting municipal, or attracting provincial and federal investments is key. Those programs are sort of out there. Uh, well, they are out there, but they take a bit of massaging to align. And that's one of the key pieces. So when we break that out, there's a little bit more detail here. You know, loans and debentures might be around 23%. Municipal Affairs and Housing, provincial investment of capital would be 27% according to this. Uh, County of Lampton Equity Investment, uh, maybe in the, that 20-ish percent range. And then those grants from CMHC, federal grants would be about 25. And then we do believe that there's a role for donations within the, uh, the, 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 the community. There is a will to do something and to contribute. And so how do we mobilize some of that? And, uh, now that does add up. And, uh, we heard this number mentioned earlier, 143 million. It's the, that's sort of the, the capital investment that would be required. The reality though is that that should not be borne by the municipality or by the county. And so how, how to marshal all of those resources is really the key. And, uh, and, but as the key, you, you as Lampton, the County of Lampton are critical to be the co-investor. The feds will not invest the money directly. The province won't step up and say, we'll take the lead. The community can't raise this kind of money on its own. And you don't want to pay for it all, but you can be the catalyst for attracting all of that as that municipal co-investor. The reality, I do want to leave you with this, is positive though. Our experience, uh, working with indwell and working with other clients is that we can build amazing buildings. Uh, I've been involved in over 20 projects, uh, over the last number of years of building this type of housing that we're talking about. Different sizes, different scales, adaptive reuse, new construction, uh, urban infill, parking lots, uh, brownfield redevelopment. It's all possible. It is complicated, but it's, it's very feasible. Uh, and the key piece is the tenacity to put together the business plan and the constant advocacy, uh, particularly for those upper levels of government funding. And so when we, uh, when we look at the solutions around, or when we look at the context around us, homelessness, we hear about people sleeping in front of the library, we, you know, destitute on our streets. We know that that is not affirming of the human condition, that it doesn't affirm any of us in terms of our shared humanity. We want to see people belong. We want to see people thrive. We want to see people back to work, continuing education, looking after their kids. This is the reality that we all want to shoot for. And I want to affirm that it is possible to overcome the status quo that we're experiencing today, to see the kind of results where people belong. And so in, uh, in reviewing the report that we've prepared, I hope that that message of hopefulness comes through, uh, along with the challenge of, of the hard work of advocating, particularly regarding those senior levels of government, the funding that's, uh, that's out there, uh, but not always easily identified. Uh, and then how do we then turn that into action and get real housing built with real supports? So thank you very much for, um, for the opportunity to work with you and work with staff. And I commend Valerie and her team for their tenacity and to your broader community for its consistent and, and growing commitment to pursuing solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Graham. Counselor Bradley.
Presentation. This type of report would have made a huge difference. There's a lot of animosity in the, in the city in particular to, to not seeing concrete directions. So we've had a number of excellent groups spring up from the, from the Rotary Club and others trying to do something. So this helps focus us and that's appreciated. The big concern I have and it's this, this lack of urgency of now. Um, it was a year ago, a year ago this month, we had a summit on the homeless. City offered up the Victoria Street Lot. And I have a question on that for you. I'll come back to it because city staff haven't seen these plans yet. And here we are now, just looking at a plan. So I have two points to, to raise with you. One is, is the plan to take all of the Victoria Street Lot because there are surrounding businesses that do need some of those parking spaces? That's the first question. And then the next one is to follow up on that.
Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, excellent point about the sense of urgency. I personally am gripped with the sense of urgency because if I was, uh, in a situation of being destitute and homeless, I would hope somebody with some capacity to make, uh, good decisions would be working hard on my behalf. And so I take that responsibility seriously. Uh, I know that many in our community are anxious for solutions too. I think that the, when we looked at the, uh, municipal parking lot there, we looked at it for its, I don't want to say highest and best use, but for the maximum potential we could see in terms of supportive housing and acknowledging that it does play a role for the local businesses. The concept that we put together does actually have ground floor, uh, or ground-oriented parking, uh, structure beneath housing. Uh, so we maximize the use of the available zoning that is there, but also kept as much parking as possible, both for those businesses and, uh, for the housing that would be, uh, constructed above. Uh, it is an opportunity to use municipal services. I mean, it's a perfectly located site. It's such a, a great location. How do we use the services that are already there, already buried in the street to its best effect and sustain or support the local businesses through things like parking? So I think with the, with a creative design, although not even that complicated, we could achieve both the housing, supportive housing, affordable rentals, and, uh, uh, maintain and, and sort of improve even some of the parking availability for local businesses.
That is appreciated. And then the bigger question to me is this, that fierce urgency of now. There's no timeline on this, on, in this paper on when to move this forward. Like, there's no timelines through it. And I realize that's a tricky thing to do with all the complexity. But if we're going to make this happen, we need that. And I'm going to suggest to County Council. And I'm going to suggest to county council, we establish, whatever you want to call it, a rapid response group to cut through everything we can at the city and at the county to get this project moving and to, to stick handle this. You just can't let this go through the normal council process at the city or the county to move it forward. So there are no timelines, and was that deliberate, or you just simply don't know at this point?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Timelines are alluded to on maybe page fourteen and some of the others. It is, time is of the essence in dealing with this, not simply from the humanitarian crisis, but federal and provincial programs are constantly in, in flux. The co-investment program, it was, it was called co-investment for the last number of years. It just got changed to Affordable Housing Fund just this week. It's currently a useful program. For the last year, it was not a useful program. It just, the grants were too low. So now is a good time to get those applications in. I would say, I, I do believe somewhere in here it mentions trying to get those applications in before summer. So to your point about being laser-focused, I think it would be very, very useful for staff to have direction from you to say, let's prioritize this, let's move as many of these things as, through as quickly as possible. Let's, let's, I don't want to say front-end in investment, but let's commit as a community to co-invest, both in our own projects and even in ones from the municipal, or from nonprofit allies, to maximize the number of federal and provincial requests that could get in this year. We know that there's elections coming at senior levels of government, and things can change with, with that, and so time is of the essence.
Conclude by saying that City on Monday will look at a number of things to a community, CIP program that will help a lot with these type of projects. And I'll, I'll hold back in serving a motion. I'm hoping when council adopts this report, the message will be clear to staff. This, and we have adopted shelter and homelessness as our, our number one priority. It will be our priority, and we'll keep coming back on it every month till we start to see that we're actually having some success. So thank you for your presentation. It was appreciated.
Okay, Counselor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Through you, to the gentleman. Actually, I, I agree with Mayor Bradley. When the, when council in Sarnia was debating gifting that land to the county, I was a fierce opponent. I, myself and another counselor were two of the nine that were against it. And to be perfectly honest, if these drawings were part of the presentation, I, I probably may have been singing a different tune. I'm thoroughly impressed with your, with what you've presented today. And I think, quite honestly, I think there was a lot of apprehension with a lot of the neighbors, particularly businesses. They were worried about what, excuse me, do you mind? They were very, very apprehensive of what kind of neighbors they were going to have. And, excuse me.
Sorry.
Well, shut your mouth when I'm saying.
Okay, let's go, go forward, Counselor Dennis.
I apologize if I distracted you. Just saying before to the college. Please continue. Anyways, there was an awful lot of apprehension about what was going to be appearing next door to the Victoria Street parking lot and so on. But anyways, I, I can see that it's going to be quite nice, and they're going to, they should like that. So anyways, kudo to you and your, your organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Warden White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Graham, for your presentation. It's good to see you again. I know you've offered a lot of, I just wanted to say this before I ask my question. I know you've offered a significant amount of time on behalf of Flourish, and I know Indwell has as well. I appreciated being on-site and having an opportunity to see an operation firsthand along with other elected officials and county staff. And I know that over the past year or so, give or take, you've offered a significant amount of, of resources to helping us understand the opportunity before us. And I just wanted to thank you for that, because I know that those, those are precious hours that you could be giving to other parts of your operation as well. So thank you for that and for the countless hours that you are offering to the members of our community who are also so passionate. This plan does help put some, I think, context to a lot of the conversations that we've been having and that we've been hearing throughout the community. I think what we're seeing is a convergence of, of the, of urgency, as, as Counselor Bradley pointed out, along with the shifting of the political will and the demand of the community to find a solution for something that, quite frankly, is moving so fast before our very eyes and faster that any of us can actually respond with, with any real efficiency and effectiveness, unfortunately. However, this sort of gap between having a, a conversation starter, which is what Sarnia Council did by offering that land, and coming to this point today where we're actually seeing options, that gap has been very difficult for a lot of members of the community to navigate, because to some, it looks like nothing is being done, yet we know that there's been a tremendous amount of work in the background. So I thank those who've been patient. I thank those who've not been as patient because they're passionate and, and demand a, a response. With all of that, one of the key components of this is a discussion that we had with the Minister of Health, the deputy premier, both the warden and myself, along with senior administration, a couple of weeks ago, met with the, the Minister of Health in regards to operational supports moving forward, at which point she thanked staff and us for bringing the projection of this opportunity forward, because she highlighted the fact that so often the capital costs are met, and then there's a request made for operational funds to which they can't respond immediately because they had no forewarning. Is, in your experience, what is that timeline like in, in terms of us being able to put a shovel in the ground, complete construction? Are we on track at this point to be able to meet up with the potential of the Ministry of Health to offer the ongoing supports? Because that's going to be a key component of, of how we make this all work.
Mr. Cubitt, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your, your comments, Counsel. I do want to acknowledge that some of my colleagues are here who helped with the report together. So it is a team effort, and we will, we will continue to work our hardest to support, support your decisions through staff. The, the question of whether, well, not whether, when and how to advocate to the province is, is perhaps the crux of this challenge, this, this issue. And I, I do follow on Twitter some of the work that you've been doing advocating for that, so thank you for doing that already. The province is reviewing their budget right now. I think if, if you want to move as quickly as you can to reaffirm your request to the minister, to Minister Jones, particularly for health, Minister Calandra for, for Municipal Affairs and Housing, to say, our community is going to act, and we need you to back us up on that, because these are their responsibilities. This budget cycle would be a good time to make sure that they know super clear that you are, are working in this direction. I think on page sixteen of the report, there is some sort of more detail around this. There, it is asynchronous, the commitments the province makes on, on the operating side versus the capital. Projects take some time to build, you know, maybe three years would be what we set ourselves up as a target, to go from having the first conversation, getting through zoning, you know, design, tendering, it takes some time to put something up, you know? But if you can get that done in three years, that's a very laudable, respectable timeline. You need those operating funds, though, at least a year ahead of time before you open, because you have to start taking intake. You have to go through the work of identifying tenants and getting people ready and hiring staff. So you don't need the MOH funding until maybe a year before you open, but you do need the MM. You'd like to have that commitment so that you know that what you're going to build is the supportive housing that you're going to operate eventually. So those timelines are not aligned, and so there is a risk in that uncertainty. I think, and this is sort of maybe on five point five of, of how to proceed, I don't want to tell you what to do when, when it comes to making a decision about the uncertainty, but I guess sometimes we've seen the fallback is, worst-case scenario, this could be affordable housing without the supports. If the MOH or some other supportive funder doesn't come through, what do you do about that? And I guess the worst-case scenario is, is rental housing. Worst-case scenario, it might be some sort of level of affordability, but that's kind of a risk that you're taking. And, and you can't blame staff then, because they didn't secure the funding if such and such and such. And I think it's in that risk-taking decision that, you know, that's your responsibility, and, and you know that. But our past experience has been, working with, example, St. Thomas, council made a decision, we're going to go down this road, we don't have those funds secured just yet, but we're going to marshal all of our efforts to work with our local health networks, our local hospital system, and to continue to push the province. So it's, it's in that gap that is really the crux of the, the decision that you make about when, when to proceed to make an investment, when to proceed to, you know, get a ball rolling on, on planning permissions and all of that.
Okay, in the essence of time, we will be discussing this later in the agenda. So I'll thank you again, Mr. Cubitt, very much for your presentation and time. Our third presentation today is Mark Perrin, the Executive Director of Tourism Sarnia Lampton, known as TSL, would like to speak to county council regarding TSL's plans and activities. Welcome, Mark.
Good morning, Warden Marriott, Deputy Warden White, mayors, city councilors, and county staff. Thank you for having Tourism Sarnia Lampton on the agenda this morning, and we're pleased to have the opportunity to provide everyone with an update of our organization. In reviewing our mission statement, Tourism Sarnia Lampton is a destination marketing development organization serving Lampton County tourism assets to enhance the economic growth and prosperity of the region. Our vision statement, Tourism Sarnia Lampton is an industry leader supporting the vital contribution of the tourism industry to the local economies. TSL uses their expertise to encourage all levels of government to improve the tourism-related infrastructure, and TSL encourage and facilitates leading-edge marketing, product development to enhance tourism industry and its partners. And just recapping a few of our highlights from 2023, looking across kind of our first program, we've had it out since 2021, and it continues to be a driving success. Our gift card program supports over three hundred different businesses throughout Lampton County, and since its inception has generated over $500,000, about 100% directly support these businesses. For our holiday season in 2023, we added another $60,000 in revenue for these gift card-supporting businesses, and we're right now between $3.5 to $4 million in economic impact just from our gift card program alone. TSL is also proud to host the 2024 South, Southern Ontario Tourism Conference this coming March. This is a conference that has never came to Lampton County before, and we're very excited to welcome our industry to Sarnia Lampton for the first time. Other highlights include partnering with Fish TV, showcasing our waterways on a multiple of TV stations, including the Outdoor Life Network. TSL also produced a video content series on Lampton County attractions, marketing our region and the craft breweries, drink producers, and experiential tourism spaces we have. One of our major projects in 2023 was creating a partnership with Ontario Creates and building a film catalog and profile for Lampton County. TSL met with Hamilton Tourism and worked together with them, learning about what they have done to be such a successful catalyst in Ontario in the filmmaking industry. With this, we've worked together to create all the permits and paperwork needed to host crews in our municipalities. We successfully attracted the film Nirmaid this past summer and used this as our template moving forward. Other highlights include Silverstick. TSL has always worked with all regional and national tournaments to assist hotel accommodations. However, this year, we also worked to create local partnership, connecting businesses with the hockey teams themselves, enhancing the economic spending in the region. Additionally, TSL has also enhanced the tournaments, Player of the Game, and opening ceremonies. We strive to aid and grow these tournaments for years to come, helping them achieve more volunteers and hosting committees on all things to create more revenue, as some of their, some of their economic challenges have been losing revenue, which support the tournaments greatly. We look forward to continuing to partner and host these great hosting committees and teams for Silverstick to ensure the greatest economic impact and success in the future. TSL was also pleased to bid and host both the Christmas Rock Story Show and the Hockey Canada Revolver Series last year. Our partnership with Hockey Canada is outstanding. The Revolver Series was a sellout instantly, and the community engagement working with all the women's hockey organizations from Lampton Attack, Lady Flags, and Lady Sting is something we're working with Hockey Canada on to be replicated across the country. Annually, TSL produces both guides and maps showcasing our Lampton County attractions, businesses, and things to do in the area. We added with the county partnership of having our kiosk displays throughout the county, and we've had our, our app-integrated individual kiosk displays, which have not only attractions listed on them, but a rewards program for people visiting these locations. It's been a great success, and we look forward to continuing to improve our app use and adding more reward locations in the future. For 2024, TSL really looks to strengthen our event, sports, culture, and festival involvement. In the past, we've sponsored many of these events and provided funding to support these events taking place. In the future, we're looking to give less support, but instead help with the marketing of these events. We realize that a lot of these events do not market outside of the region, and one of the most important things TSL can do is provide assistance in our marketing expertise to promote and market all these great things happening in Lampton County to ensure that they're being noticed across the region, up to 500 kilometers and plus away. TSL looks forward to doing many more media buys directly with these events and festivals, sport, culture, and making them great successes in the future. These are some examples of our GTA media buys. We have a great campaign now, working directly in the GPA area, billboards on Gardner Expressway, downtown Eaton Center. Many of our local attractions are now featured on these screens, in video, and in different promotions we are doing. Same with in publications. We have continued our, our printing, as well as our social media presence and our radio buy campaigns, really promoting different areas, different promotions, and different getaways people can do across Lampton County. Our campaigns continue to be very successful, especially we're seeing the number of likes, follows, shares, and the overall viewer readership of our digital campaigns. Additionally, some of our buys in the major, major markets, we are working with Toronto Star, Globe and Mail, also the Detroit Free Press. We've worked in other US magazines this year, was getting back to, to really focusing on the greater Detroit and regional areas, including kind of that Chicago tri-state area of Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan. We're continuing to promote US travel coming to Sarnia Lampton, and it's one of our key elements in our 2024 strategic plan. Tourism continues to be vital to our economy. As we invite more visitors to our economy, it creates such a great economic and visitor spending for the area, creating new jobs, tax revenues, and more. There's a flowchart there of kind of how the tourism industry relates, going to sales employment in the region. Overall, Tourism Sarnia Lampton has been one of the most active and engaging organizations in the industry. We've been given recognition from Southwest Ontario Tourism and the tourism industry of Ontario for both our programming and our special, and our, especially our event management and marketing abilities. For our economy, tourism is a key economic driver, not only in Lampton County, in Lampton County, but across Ontario. The industry supports over 400,000 jobs, and tourism is a The industry supports over 400,000 jobs and tourism is a $36 billion industry in Ontario. Locally, the economic impact of our tourism industry is north of $200 million, supporting the many businesses in the region directly from tourism funding. In addition, we we have now became in recent years a strong competitor with other markets, including competing with London, Kitchener, Windsor, and these markets, these markets are obviously much larger than us, but if we're able to compete with them, it's been very successful for our organization. Tourism Sarnia Lampton in 2024 continues to strengthen our partnerships. We recently just did a Destination Ontario partnership where we have updated our our filming and our photography in across Lampton shores, St. Clair Township and Petroy Anisquillen. Last year, we worked with Sarnia and had Discover Ontario out and did a $20,000 campaign with them that was a great success. Anytime we can take our funding and multiply it with both TIO, Ontario Southwest and the Ontario Government, it becomes a very successful campaign, and we look to continue doing this in the future. For 2024, we are attending the conference that will be in March. We're working on a signage program to better understand the signage in Lampton County and how we can better promote our assets to those coming off the bridge as well as traveling down the 402. We continue to strengthen our marketing in all areas, including our our media buys, our billboard, signage, social media and overall marketing plans. We're continuing to work with Ontario Creates in the filming sector, attracting more filming to take place as it's a major economic impact generator, working with film crews locally. We're we're proud to be supporting the Petroya 150th, working with them closely on their on their music programming and their entertainment for the event. In addition to that, we're looking forward to updating a lot of our facility guides, including our sports and recreation facilities, our hotel programs and overall our business directories. We're looking forward to working with many of our businesses and continue to help them achieve success and growth in the industry. And soon we'll be announcing an event that will be welcoming the world to Sarnia Lampton. Tourism economies overall create an outstanding economic impact for our community and our prosperity. It's one of the most important aspects for mental health as a program or experience or event makes people feel welcomed, engaged, happy, refreshed and part of something special. Tourism equally, sorry, tourism equally creates community vibrancy, and with tourism, we are truly welcoming making Lampton County a better place to visit, work, live and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Counselor McRoberts, please.
Good morning, Mark. Thank you for your presentation and all the work that yourself and your team and your board do. As a person that is self-employed and owns a business in Sarnia, your gift certificate program is outstanding. The agencies and businesses that are encouraged to purchase these and gift to their employees have brought approximately $12,000 worth of sales to my store of people that had never been there before because I questioned them when they pay with it. So thank you because that's a brilliant program, and I encourage any local business in Lampton County to participate in that.
Thank you, Counselor McRoberts. Counselor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, to Mr. Perrin. Kudos and congratulations to your team. You've done a fantastic job. That exhibition game that you put on between Team Canada and Team USA went over tremendously. I know a lot of people that watched it and were attended the game. It got brought the city national or international exposure. The recent Silver Stick, it brought in people from all over North America, and more importantly, it brought in their money, millions of dollars to to our beautiful county. And I just want to apologize on behalf of the city, the fact that no one was there to attend the opening ceremonies. I can promise you that won't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, and Counselor Bradley.
The presentation, 10 years ago in this chamber or roughly, this chamber gave a huge boost in funding to Tourism Sarnia Lampton. And it was on the basis of the development of tourism infrastructure, bricks and mortar that would attract people. How's that going?
For your worship. Mr. Bradley, if you could explain a little more just on what type of tourism infrastructure you're you're kind of referring to?
Was asking for in those days, they wanted to see the development of a tourist attraction, a year-round attraction in Sarnia Lampton. And there were a number of proposals floating around. None of the local municipalities have the skills to advance that. Tourism Sarnia Lampton was given the money to try to find ways to to attract, and I've raised with you a number of times, haven't had a full response on cruise ships. That's a more of a promotional thing. But on the actual trying to develop the tourism ministry, just as SLEP does with business, trying to develop a new business that will bring people into the area. How is that going?
Mr. Perrin, please.
So I think instead of bricks and mortar and infrastructure that way, Tourism Sarnia Lampton has been focused on bidding and bringing different event attractions to to Sarnia Lampton. And from those events, basically using what spaces we have available throughout the county. I think Tourism Sarnia Lampton, we'd be more than happy to to sit down with all municipalities and talk infrastructure. Infrastructure is something from a tourism standpoint that we are lacking, and we would definitely look at ways of building. Tourism Sarnia Lampton, as far as myself coming on board, recognized right away that we should get the municipal accommodation tax going so that could create tourism infrastructure funding for municipalities to use directly for infrastructure. And we hope that that funding pot can be used for that in the future.
That issue of the tax was in motion a long time before at the provincial level, before it landed here. But I'm not I'm not getting a clear answer. If someone walks in the door right now and says, I want to look at the possibility of building this type of project, which would be a tourism destination, do you have the skills or your organization to deal with that? Because that's what that funding was about.
Absolutely, we have the skills to deal with that, and we would welcome any business to reach out and contact us and work with them on how to get going, whether it's getting a shovel in the ground, getting a program going or supporting them on bringing more people to Sarnia Lampton.
Question, because you came to Sarnia Council last year looking for money. You receive, what's your exact budget? I have the number here someplace. It's it's close to 809, a million dollars?
Our our funding from the county would be almost 900,000, yeah.
What puzzles me is why you have to ask for funding from local communities when you have a huge budget paid for by all the municipalities in this in this in this chamber? And I think you got that money. If you want to bid on things, get them in here, but don't ask the local municipalities because we're already paying through our levy.
Yeah, I think that a lot of the event bids and how it's structured is that they require municipal support on those bids. That's pretty standard in bidding on any kind of event attraction to come is working hand in hand with the municipality to to bring those. And typically, that's why we're asking. I think you're referring to a one-off request when it was when fees were raised and we already had a bid in place based on past fees versus future fees. But I think overall, just better communication between both staff and TSL and working with council, and we can achieve great things all working together.
Counselor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Warren, through you to our guest. Tourism is economic development. I know we can all agree on that. And being that that's the case, how much, how often you work with Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership as a partnership to try to bring this forward? That would my question.
Go ahead, Mr. Perrin.
Yeah, so we, for your worship, we do work with SLEP quite frequently. We do have basically Matthew now on our board, but formerly Dan on our board of directors. So sharing information back and forth and through COVID, we worked really close together on different programming and availability. But I would say from from a standpoint of anytime that really we're looking at new business construction, we defer them to the SLEP programming as they're kind of more savvy in the business grants or business opportunities for direct support. And then we're more of a marketing promotions team on how to really market and enhance their, you know, their their image throughout the industry and attract more visitors to their location.
Follow, thank goodness, Warden. So when it comes to bricks and mortar projects, that would be the norm, that you would reach out to Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership, use their expertise and house to try to make those things happen, projects such as Mayor Bradley suggested. So that's something that's done regularly, working together to try to find those opportunities for those brick and mortar type situations?
Yeah, that's correct. In the in the past, it would be during my time there, it's been mainly hotel related. When we have hotels interested in building in the area, it's deferring them to to SLEP for what lands available and what all that looks like from their side.
Mr. Gordon, I promise this will be my last question. How often does that happen? How often does that discussion take place? How much, how many opportunities are coming around that you're actually having that discussion with SLEP on trying to find some bricks and mortar? Because again, I see both organizations in the development game, and I always have. And I know one time we was giving discussion about mirroring the two and putting the two under the same roof so they could communicate and work better. And that was a long time ago, and I've been away for four years, so excuse the question. That's why I'm asking. So just look for some clarity if I could.
Mark, please.
Yeah, I think I think right now it's kind of as an on-need basis. I would say since since COVID, in general, the tourism industry has still been rebounding, so we haven't had a whole lot of new growth for businesses coming back. But I know in conversations with our previous executive director that, you know, we talked more about how we could really position tourism assets in the future and make that part of their portfolio as well. So we continue to work together and welcome that opportunity with with our new leadership.
Okay, I think we'll end discussion there. It's it's getting to be a long meeting, but thank you again for your presentation, Mark.
Thank you.
Our fourth and final presenter is Matthew Slotwinski, interim CEO, and Adrian Lee, acting chair for the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership, known as SLEP, will like to speak to county council regarding SLEP's plans and activities. Welcome, Matthew and Adrian.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here today on behalf of the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership to provide an update on our activities as an organization and to provide a look forward to the year ahead. We take great pride in being the lead economic development agency for the County of Lampton, and our goal is to effectively service all 11 municipalities to drive economic stability, sustainability and opportunity. We have a dedicated and professional staff of economic developers delivering the primary functions of SLEP to the community. And new staff this year I'd like to mention include Allison Minato and Teresa Kimmerly. Well, Chantel Corr has shifted into an economic development role focused on business retention, expansion and rural projects. Myself am presently operating in the role of interim CEO and look forward to making the a continued long-term and sustainable impact on Sarnia Lampton. SLEP is also supported by various contract and grant funded staff, allowing the organization to escalate the portfolio of services available to municipalities, businesses and residents. And our primary functions are really linked to three core concepts, those being attraction, retention and expansion, where we seek to drive new investment, reinvestment, workforce opportunities and entrepreneurship to Sarnia Lampton, which I'll elaborate on all of those here today. In addition to the core operational funding provided by the county, SLEP also leverages significant external funding and grants to escalate our service delivery. In 2023, we received north of a half million dollars in external funding to support projects linked to attraction of foreign direct investment, supporting rural downtown development and providing employment supports to newcomers and job seekers. And in 2023, we finalized the new five-year strategic plan that will guide the organization based on six core elements that I'll briefly introduce. Organization, branding and marketing under the theme "We've Got Chemistry." Workforce, where we focus on attracting talent, supporting immigration and assisting industry needs. Our energy and chemistry cluster development. Agricultural and rural communities focused on better leveraging agricultural assets in the community and supporting rural areas. And lastly, innovation and market readiness. And this is especially important as we seek to ensure that our land and development sites are truly investment ready to support the investment opportunities that we see. Business attraction and retention are the key drivers of SLEP, and we seek to secure, as we seek to secure capital investment and job creation. SLEP EDOs are actively working with 67 clients considering Sarnia Lampton for defined projects. And the opportunity is massive. There's currently $12.5 billion in potential investment within our our project pipeline. But just as important, there is tremendous opportunity for local expansions with SLEP working with several projects cumulatively worth north of $100 million in total investment across Lampton County. And Sarnia Lampton is making the shortlist for many of these as a potential site location for many of these investments. Last year, we had nine international companies conduct site visits for projects that would total $9 billion in total total investment and support up to 1,900 total jobs. I'll note that many of these investments are looking for greenfield site opportunities with very large scale utility demands. The key industrial sectors that we have focused our industrial attraction efforts on continue to represent a mixture of our historical areas of strength linked to an economic shift towards sustainability. Chemistry and energy linked to sustainable chemistry, which linked to agriculture, which are all supported by advanced manufacturing. These sectors are seeing significant growth across North America, with the net zero transition pushing investment and innovation. And our success will not come from a total deviation from our core industrial mix, but rather through a well-defined shift, leveraging the transition to net zero. Our integrated energy and chemistry cluster continues to support the lion chair of our investment leads, and our efforts linking low-carbon hydrogen have elevated the Ontario's hydrogen hub in Sarnia Lampton to national recognition as an area for potential investment in the hydrogen space. Opportunities linked to the EV and EV battery supply chain have arisen somewhat organically, but due to the existence of heavy industrial land in Lampton County and our proximity to major projects with very large periphery supply chain requirements, the investment prospects most likely to shortlist Sarnia Lampton have been in this sector. But also, leads in that sector have come come from well-developed relationships with Invest Ontario and Invest in Canada. SLEP has been very successful in leveraging external partnerships for assistance with investment lead generation and business expansion opportunities. And this includes not only our relationships with provincial ministry or provincial and federal ministries and agencies, but our continued relationships with entities like Bioindustrial Innovation Canada, the Ontario Food Cluster and key site selectors. And just as important as our external partners have been our local partners as well. And the list of leveraged partners is is far too long to list and to mention here today, but certainly they are essential to what we provide to the community. And you can certainly see the significant number of groups, boards and committees in which our staff either lead or participate within. Our goal is is active participation to mutually provide and inject value while extracting value as well. We've undertaken a major refocus on advocacy recently to support economic growth and transition. And these provincial and national advocacy efforts have resulted in positive progress, such as the alleviation of some barriers linked to geological carbon sequestration. Other highlights include our efforts linked to the Canadian Energy Innovation Network, the development of the low the low-carbon hydrogen industry Ontario and transportation. Entrepreneurship is a key mandate of the Small Business Enterprise Centre located within SLEP. The core services of the ESPEC include are linked to one-on-one business counselling and the inclusion of seminars and workshops and various programming aimed at supporting entrepreneurs and small businesses. Last year, we saw successful delivery of the long-running Starter Company Program and Summer Company Programs, which collectively supported 10 businesses, and the very successful Digital Main Street Program that serviced north of 340 businesses across Lampton County. Our team has strengthened Lampton's local workforce supply, delivering innovative programs that support population growth and job creation through immigration, apprenticeship and community promotion. And we and we've done this through the implementation And we, and we've done this through the implementation of creative marketing campaigns aimed to promote living in Sarnia-Lampton to residents of larger urban centers. Our team has launched innovative tools, such as the Apprenticeship Job Match Tool and the Explore Talent website, which seek to increase hiring capacity for local employers and to source skilled talent. And lastly, the Newcomer Connection Program supports newcomers connecting with employment opportunities with a focus on recruiting for hard-to-fill positions. So far, and this has only been a program for nine months, we've supported 350 job seekers, 125 local employers, and created 40 new jobs. Looking to the future, I want to emphasize some key areas where SLEP will focus to ensure economic growth, new investment, and job creation across Sarnia-Lampton. The successful implementation of our strategic plan will ultimately drive, would drive our success over the next five years. As priority economic sectors, we will lead efforts, including advancing emerging net-zero tri, the emerging net-zero transition and Ontario's Hydrogen Hub, and potential for the EV supply chain and circular economy. A heightened focus on dynamic branding and marketing will seek to drive investment attraction, engage local stakeholders, and draw talent and population with "We've Got Chemistry" in mind. But we can't only look, but we can't only seek to be known outside of Lampton County. We must intensify our engagement, our support, our active collaboration, and our communication with all 11 municipalities. Growing local business has just a large impact on attracting, on attracting new jobs to the area, and we are undertaking efforts to better satisfy the potential for business retention and expansion through re-envisioned commitment to localized investment and job creation by those existing businesses. We want to be in their face, we want to be known, we want to be assisting their growth needs. Key to our future success in securing the potential investment that I, that I discussed earlier in this presentation and driving it to Sarnia-Lampton is the need for us to champion land and site readiness initiatives. This is of critical importance and will ultimately guide the future direction of our investment attraction efforts and the success of them. Lastly, we will continue to utilize our position of influence to advocate on key issues impacting on economic potential across Sarnia-Lampton. So I do thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here today, and certainly welcome any questions, should there be any.
Thank you for that, Matthew. Councillor Agar, please.
Thanks, Matthew. I just want to say thank you. You've worked very hard for St. Clair Township, and we appreciate it. It benefits all of the county, and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Councillor Bradley.
And I want to add to that. Congratulations, Matthew, on your interim appointment. The one area that we have been focusing on at SLEP, and Warden, myself, and Mr. Tifo are on the board, has been electric vehicles and that electric vehicle battery plants. That world seems to be changing. And one of the concerns I've had in the past with strategic plans is the inability to turn the ship and move in a different direction. So how are you adjusting to what appears to be sort of a, I don't want to say a collapse, but a lessening of the focus on electric vehicles, electric vehicle batteries, because the government has now given over $50 billion in subsidies? So our odds are slimmer, I know we've had some contacts. So how do you see readjusting that strategy? And what would be the one or two key areas you would move to beyond what we're already doing with the chemistry industry?
Matthew, please.
And if I may ask for clarity, you're suggesting there's a move away from the EV and EV battery industry?
If you're following the news in North America, this last winter storm showed that electric vehicles, and we, as a city looking out for electric buses, we've pulled back for the time being, that there seems to be a pulling back on the, at one point, just 100% support moving there. And I still support the direction, but there's a lot of fallibilities coming forward. So how do you readjust? Because it seems to me the EV battery, which is what Canada's been looking at manufacturing places, we're at our limit now. So how do you adjust that? And then how do we also, you know, get a reputation in Ottawa and Queen's Park to support the chemistry, chemical industry?
Of course. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on this. So the reality is, while the EV and EV battery supply chain are ultimately going to grow to some limit, due to various investments that have already been announced and their extreme need for supply chains to service those investments, there will be, for at least the short term, a continued opportunity linked to that particular industry. At the same time, the drive towards net zero, really across all industries, represents a huge opportunity for Sarnia-Lampton. And if we were to look at something like the automotive industry as a continued focus, that may be ultimately a transition towards hydrogen and hydrogen cars. And we're already focusing on low-carbon hydrogen as a key opportunity in Sarnia-Lampton. While that opportunity is much more derived around demand for industrial uses, it's something that across the hydrogen demand ladder could represent opportunities into transportation and logistics or other opportunities as well. The, hopefully that answers some of your question there?
First, I have Councillor Dennis and then Councillor Case.
Thank you, Warden Merritt. You hit the nail right on the head. Actually, General Motors and Honda just announced an $85 million venture. They're going to invest that money into an advanced, large-scale hydrogen fuel cell production facility, 70,000-square-foot facility, and they're going to work on a collaboration. They're going to explore hydrogen fuel cell system as a way to contribute broader accessibility to sustainable technologies. So that could be the way to the future as far as they're concerned. That's what they're leaning towards now, so you're, you're right on track. That's what you're, you're thinking is, seems like it's in the right direction. So I know we've kind of talked about ourselves as a hydrogen hub, so I think we could be right on the right direction, so good, good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Case.
Yes, thanks to Mr. Warden, to Matthew. Matthew, I love your passion. I love your passion for this business, and I also, I also really appreciate your comments when you talked about working closely with all of the municipalities, because even though we have some larger municipalities that are really in the development game, such as St. Clair Township and the City of Sarnia, we realize a lot of your energies have to go there. We and Warwick Township are proof that you have worked with lower-tier municipalities, smaller municipalities, to bring positive things forward, such as BC Foods in our community. So again, I just wanted to say congratulations on the new posting and keep up the good work. And I do look forward to those discussions with all 11 municipalities and trying to find ways to make Lampton County grow as a whole. So again, thank you very much for all your efforts and your team.
Thank you for that, Councillor Case. Any other questions before we close it off? Seeing none, thanks again, Adrian and Matthew. Great presentation. I think maybe we should take a real quick, five-minute biology break for those who haven't had the chance to do that yet, but it'll be quick.
Do we have a motion? Councillor Broad moves, Councillor Miller seconds, all in favor. That's carried. Number 11 is the Annual General Meeting of the County of Lampton Community Development Corporation. The Annual General Meeting, AGM, of the Lampton County Development Corporation will be held at County Council, open session meeting. And if we refer to the agenda, I would look for a mover for Chair. Councillor Bradley.
As past, past, past practice, I would suggest that, Warden Merritt, as a member of the Board and as a person in Lampton County, you chair the meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Case seconds, all in favor. That's carried. And I'd ask Mr. Tifo to list the members present, please.
Thank you very much. All of County councils, council members are members of the corporation. In terms of the Board of Directors, we have Mike Bradley, who's been nominated to be Chair of that Board, Rob Curtis, President of Lampton County, or Lampton College, who's been nominated to be Vice Chair, Allison Ewer as a member of the Board, Miriam Capretz, member of the Board, David Muir, member of the Board, Tom Streifler, a member of the Board, together with Brian White, Deputy Warden, and Kevin Merritt as your Warden. In terms of the CLCDC staff, executive staff, of course, we have Catherine Albion, the Executive Director, who's with us this morning. Corporate officers are Larry Pelarchio as Treasurer, myself as a Secretary, and we have two advisory board members, being Kelly Provo from the City of Sarnia and Matthew Slotwinski from SLEP.
Thank you for that. And third on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover for the agenda, please? Deputy Warden White and Councillor Sagman seconds, all in favor. That's carried. Ask if there's any pecuniary interest to be given at this time. Seeing none, we would move to presentation of the financial statements. Do we have a mover to, oh, Mr. Pelarchio, would you like to comment on that?
So just through the Ward, the presentation of the audited financial statements as reviewed by BDO, you'll see in the package that the financial statements, which include, include the statement of financial position, the statement of operations, the statement of changes in net financial debt, and the statement of cash flow position. Just to reassure everyone, BDO provided the CLCDC with an unqualified audit opinion, which is the opinion that you would want, which indicates that there's a clean bill of health as the statements were prepared by the CLCDC Oregon and the County of Lampton. If there's any questions on any of those statements, please feel free, feel free to ask us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pelarchio. Any questions? Councillor Bradley, please.
I think it's important to get on the record now, but because of some of the loss of tenants who've either graduated or have significantly decreased their presence in the building, that has had a negative impact on our cash flow. I believe the Board has brought someone in to help increase the tenancy, and I wonder if Mr. Pelarchio or Ms. Avlin can speak to those steps to deal with the loss of those tenants.
Who would like to tackle that at this time?
Thank you, Warden Merritt. I will just comment on that. We have had some significant downsizings in the footprint of some of our commercial office tenants in the past year, which I will be sharing in our slide deck momentarily. And because of this downsizing situation that we're currently in, because of the current commercial real estate environment, we have brought in an independent, third-party business consultant who is in the process of conducting an assessment of the CLCDC. consultant who is in the process of conducting an assessment of the CLCDC, and within the next couple of weeks, he will be providing us with recommendations to improve our financial performance and occupancy rates.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions on the, on the financial statements? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve. Deputy Warden White and Counselor Miller, all in favor. That's carried. That brings us to the update from our Executive Director, Ms. Albion, please.
Good morning, Ward and Marriott and members of Lampton County Council. I'm pleased to be here today to share the Research Parks update with you. This morning, I'll provide you with an overview of our current status as we navigate the impacts of the pandemic and we prepare to welcome new tenants to the park, our research commercialization and knowledge-based activities, and our 2023 successes as we continue to live, to deliver on our mandate to support economic growth, innovation, wealth creation, and employment in Sarnia-Lampton. The County of Lampton Community Development Corporation was incorporated by the County of Lampton in 2003 as a joint initiative of the City of Sarnia, the County of Lampton, and Western University. We are affiliated with Western through the Western Research Parks. Together, the three Western Research Parks support and accelerate the growth and sustainability of businesses throughout southwestern Ontario. The Western Research Parks have a history of success and international recognition based on our support of our research and commercialization tenants, our tenants' economic impacts on our regions, and their success rates once they graduate from the park. The Research Park is currently experiencing an anticipated transition as we complete the pandemic phase of our real estate cycle, and the last of our leases come due for renewal since the pandemic began. In 2023, we had a few large office suites return to us as companies continue to right-size their offices due to the hybrid work environment as well as additional economic influences. We've also had three tenants graduate from the Research Park and into our local communities to continue to thrive. COVID has resulted in a shift of occupancy levels for Research Parks across North America, and all Research Parks are considering options to increase their occupancy levels. The Research Park's current occupancy is 65%. In 2023, approximately 60,000 square feet of office spaces were returned to the park by office tenants, resulting in our decreased occupancy rate. However, throughout the pandemic and including in 2023, we still welcome new tenants to the park in emerging sectors aligned with our mandate. We have leased 12,000 square feet of space at the Research Park in the last six weeks, and we are beginning to see renewed interest in our suites and facilities. The year 2012 is our reference point, since we struggled at that time due to the loss of a very major anchor tenant, which dropped our occupancy below 50%. Since the park's establishment, we have relied heavily on the lease of office suites to sustain our operations. Due to the cyclical nature of the real estate market, we require a high occupancy rate to be financially self-sufficient due to our historically high debt load, and there are times when we require additional support to sustain our operations. While our office revenue has decreased, we have grown our revenue by increasing the number of small tenants in the research and knowledge sectors at the Research Park. In 2023, we saw the decrease in revenue due to the large office suites returned to the park, resulting in our current revenue gap. We do carry various credit facilities. Following the construction of the 1050 building, we financially restructured and attained a loan of about $25 million. Over the last 10 years, we have paid down the loan to where it is currently at about $14 million. We also have a cogeneration unit. Although the cogeneration has saved us well over $1 million in energy savings since it became operational, this loan is currently valued at approximately $1.2 million. And due to our revenue gap, we have been relying on a line of credit that was established for us around 2018 to cover our current mortgage payments. So we anticipate we may meet the current credit limit later this year if we maintain the same run rate. However, up until the last two fiscal years, when we began to see the impact of the pandemic on our office tenants, we were generating surplus cash from our operations following the payment of the mortgage. And as we mentioned previously, based on our current revenue situation, we have retained the services of a third-party consultant who is currently conducting an assessment of our operations to provide us with a plan to improve financial performance and our Although there has been a shift in the types of spaces needed in recent years, Research Parks and Innovation Districts are needed now more than ever to drive the long-term sustainable impacts for communities, and we continue to drive towards a bright future. We expect to receive the recommendations of the consultant before the end of February for review and implementation. We continue to plan to expand our research capabilities, develop land to host research centers, and are exploring the potential of a new industrial research center focused on the commercialization of fermentation technologies to further diversify and strengthen the local industrial sector. We continue to fulfill the park's mandate of supporting technology-based economic growth and diversification. Throughout the pandemic and especially throughout the last two years, our research and innovation tenants grew their presence at the park. We continue to see companies graduate from the park and into our local communities, and both these trends have continued through the low point of our real estate cycle. Although our overall occupancy has decreased, we currently have more companies at the park now than we have in previous years. Here we have a sampling of some of our research companies with projects underway or that have graduated from the park. Our research labs are busy with students, researchers, engineers, and technologists conducting research parks for local clients, supporting our local companies, as well as advancing emerging economic sectors. Our pilot plant is an open space for researchers and companies to scale up their technologies. It allows companies to continue to develop and demonstrate their ideas at the scale between the lab bench and industrial production. Our pilot plant tenants are at various stages of the commercialization process, and these are examples of some of our current and graduated tenants. Our knowledge-based tenants are Lampton College and Western Engineering. Last October, we held a successful Go Eng Girl event to help encourage girls to consider pursuing a career in engineering. Based on local interest and participation rates, we will host Go Code Girl in April for the first time in Sarnia-Lampton to encourage diversity in coding, and the Discovery Western Engineering Camp for youth in July. Last fall, Lampton College launched their Canadian Extrusion Research Lab in our pilot plant to support the development of the circular economy while supporting companies and providing new opportunities for students. We also have nearly 300 Lampton College students at the Research Park daily to work on their Will projects as an alternative to co-op placements. This table shows a sampling of some of our achievements from the last year, from maintaining full research labs to the renewal of leases for approximately one-third of the park's total space. Origin had a significant milestone as a park graduate with the ribbon cutting of their new commercial plant, and we continue to explore the unique opportunity to fill a fermentation gap in the Canadian research sector. We welcome new tenants to the park in emerging sectors, and we began the development of new programming and events with Western. This table shows some of the final strategic metric plan values for 2023. Although we are in the valley of our real estate cycle, we continue to see growth in our research and startup companies, such that we met or exceeded many of our key performance indicator goals for the year. The park and our tenants continue to create local, national, and international impacts. We continue to support technology-based companies and emerging economic sectors, and our tenants are diversifying and creating new opportunities in Lampton County. 2024 is the 21st anniversary of the establishment of the Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park. In these 21 years, we have achieved extraordinary levels of success and received international recognitions. Our tenants, clients, and projects have made a lasting impact on Lampton County, where the park has led the growth of new sectors, job creation, innovation, and wealth creation for this region, and we have done this in collaboration with our partners. Research, commercialization, and entrepreneurship are at the heart of the Research Park mandates, and we are fulfilling our mission and vision of supporting economic growth and development. I would like to invite all members of council to attend a special information session with Laura Oblenis, the CEO of Stiletto, a strategic planning firm with a specialization in Research Parks. Laura has direct experience with Research Parks across North America that demonstrates the importance of parks to the development of local, of economic development for local communities, and is knowledgeable of successful initiatives at these other parks. So I hope you will join us for the information session on February 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Catherine, are there any questions? Counselor Dennis, please.
Ward Marriott to Dr. Albion. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Albion. I noted in your key park metrics that in the year 2023, almost 50 jobs, 46 to be exact, were created from the Research Park activities. I found that statistic to be very impressive, and was hoping that you could offer a few more details on these jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dennis. Yes, we do have some of our research tenants that are expanding very rapidly. So these are jobs that are associated with our pilot plant and research lab tenants. So these are new jobs in the areas of research, pilot plant operations, and also the skilled trades associated with those facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Loosely, please.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. Doctor, I just want to mention, thank you for that report. Well done.
Thanks. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I would look for, move on to the next item on the agenda, Confirmation of Officers and Directors. That's on page 108 of the, of the report. Do we have a motion to move those? Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Sagman. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And then number eight, Appointment of the Auditors. We look for a motion to appoint BDO for Counselor Cook and Counselor Case. All in favor? That's carried. Any other business for the CLCDC, AGM? Seeing none, look for adjournment. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Hand and Counselor Dennis, seconded that, all in favor. That's carried. Thank you again, Dr. Albion. That moves us to item number 12, Correspondence. First, A, Correspondence to Receive and File. We have five items. How would you like to deal with those? Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Ward Marriott. I just wonder if we could pull out 02-10-24 and support the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors and their motion. Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Broad and seconded by Counselor Case. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. The other four items, receive and file, that's Counselor Cook and Counselor Sagman, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Brings us to number 13, Board of Health. We have correspondence to receive and file. There are eight items. Do we have a motion to receive and file? Counselor Broad moves. Counselor McEwen seconds, all in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. And item B, Information Reports. We have three items there. How would you like to handle these three? Counselor Bushy, you move to receive and file? Do you have a second for that? Counselor Dennis, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you, Dr. Duick. Item number 14, Information Reports. A, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. We have an information report dated February the 7th regarding rural transportation follow-up. Counselor Bradley?
Well, not thrilled about spending more money on this. I think it's time we do something substantial as it relates to doing transportation, particularly for the rural part of Lampton County. And I think it's, it's time. We've heard from Lampton Shores how important and valuable transportation is to them as it relates to supporting their employment market. We've heard from other communities that want better transportation between the larger urban areas and elsewhere in Lampton County. So I think it's time we take that leap of faith, and there may be solutions out there. We know other communities have moved to Uber to move people around. We know other solutions are there. We've just had two major companies provide in and out service to Sarnia by bus. So I'm willing to move forward and we get us, get this study done to see if we can make this work in reality.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second for that? Counselor Loosely, seconds. Discussion.
This report does not contain a recommendation, but there is...
Further on?
Yes.
That's what I'm moving, Mr. Ward.
Oh, okay.
But we move forward ahead on this intercity rural transportation study.
Okay. Just to be clear, last one more time for discussion? If not, all in favor of that? Opposed, if any? That's carried. And 14B, Social Services Division. We have an information report dated February the 7th regarding Children's Services System How would you like to proceed with this report? Counselor Loosely?
Thank you, Ward Marriott. Is that, is that not considered further on in the agenda?
Yes, it is. 16 under 16.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll wait and make a motion at that time. Thank you.
Okay. So Counselor Cook?
Receive and File.
And seconded by Counselor Loosely, all in favor? That's carried. Could have done both of them together, but the second one is the information report dated February the 7th regarding Affordable and Supportive Housing Strategic Development Plan. Counselor Bradley?
I will move it. But I want to add, and I did talk to the presenter earlier, I said, are there other communities that have not taken three years to develop housing projects? And I was told there have been. I think Woodstock was used as an example. It was only 18 months. So if we move forward on this, let's make that our goal to not take three years. Let's make it 18 months or as easily as, and we can do it. We put together a team from the county, the city, and the other agencies and, and the other communities affected, and just move forward as quickly as possible, a rapid response to what is a crisis.
Okay. After, Mr. Tifo, do we have to change the wording of that? So yeah, this report does not, also does not have anything, but Ms. Legay has something, if you want to hear that too, that you could propose. Ms. Legay, please.
Thank you, Ward and Marriott.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. So the draft motion before the floor right now is that staff be directed to pursue each project listed in the Supportive and Affordable Housing Strategic Development Plan, seek upper-level financial support thereof, and seek further instructions and approvals from County Council on a project-by-project basis.
That doesn't give the fierce urgency of now that I've heard around this table many times. So I'm also trying to be fair because I realize there's lots of things that can happen in these type of projects. But I think it should be our goal to at least get one of the major projects done within the 18 months. And that means prioritizing resources. And I also think we may, we may have to establish a separate group to make this happen. And if you need a motion for the next meeting, I'll do that, but I just want us to get moving. Or Doug Ford would say, get it done.
So Ms. Legay can, can alter that to try and accommodate the time constraint?
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. So I can add an amendment to that motion with a goal of completing one of the projects outlined in the plan within completion of 18 months.
So we've added that. Counselor Broad.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. I had a question for Mr. Cubid, and I'm sure someone else can hear, can answer it. I read through the report, and I was thinking that the money that the county required was going to be levied. And then in Mr. Cubid's presentation, he mentioned non-levy. So just for clarification, in my mind, you know, there was a $30,782,000 ask from the county. Then there's a $32,306,415 loan and debenture. Are any of these non-levy, whether Larry or Valerie can, like, is that $30,000 on non-levy or a levy item for the county?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden Marriott, Counselor Broad. The numbers in the report at this time are really just a recommendation or a suggestion. We would be seeking dollars from both the provincial and the federal government, and we would, we would, once successful, of course, come back to this council and let you know what our suggestion is that the council will need to, to put into the project. But at this time, it's not, you know, set in stone. It really is just a budget estimate.
Just a follow-up then. So the $30,782,000 ask of the county will include funds from the federal and provincial government?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
No, the total cost, if we were to do all of the builds, is estimated at about $140 million. And the suggestion is perhaps the county may need to put forward $30 million in levy dollars and $30 million in debenture. But again, we would be requesting dollars from both the federal and the provincial government and hope to reduce that ask. And if I could add, there are dollars already in the Affordable Housing Reserve that's small, but we have already started to put some of those dollars into the Affordable Housing Reserve that was approved by County Council in 2021.
Thank you. Follow-up, Counselor Broad?
Thank you very much, Valerie. That answers my question. If the warden hadn't cut me off, I would have put that question to Mr. Cubid, but I got cut off. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Lucely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I just wondered, do you, like, Valerie, do you have an idea of what we have in reserve now?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Lucely. In the reserve right now, we have put, the first year we put 1.2 million, and the second year we put 2 million, so that's 3.2 million. There will be an additional ask in the upcoming budget. And of course, we have committed a lot of those dollars. 700,000 went to our seed funding. Some other dollars have gone to smaller projects that were brought to council. So at this time, there is just under 2 million in that reserve.
Counselor Bradley. Oh, sorry, Counsel Lucy. Counsel Bradley.
Just for clarification, the accelerator money, is it in that fund? We talked about those projects. We're going to try to accelerate as quickly as possible. Is it in that fund, or is that going to be drawn from somewhere else?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you to Counsel Bradley. Sorry, can you clarify the question? Do you, because the county didn't receive funding from the accelerator fund, so the reserve is strictly the levy dollars that were approved each year?
Projects, we're looking for accelerating fund, like the Rotary Club project, like the others. Is that in that fund, if we were to draw that? And when is that money going to roll out?
So what council approved was seed funding to the five different projects, and that has rolled out, and that's come from that Affordable Housing Reserve. That's correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a seconder. Counselor Dennis seconds it. All in favor? That's carried. Sorry, I should have realized we didn't have that seconder. So that moves us to item number 15, items not requiring a motion. Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee minutes dated December 19th, 2023. Counsel Bradley moves. Counsel Agar seconds. All in favor?
No, sorry, Mr. Ward, I'm going to move with thanks back to the committee. I've been following their progress. I followed their mandate, and they're doing a tremendous amount of work, and that needs to be responded back to them. We appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do that. Thanks. All in favor? Again, sorry. Opposed, if any? That's carried. Brings us to number 16, reports requiring motion. A, Corporate Services Division, a report dated February the 7th, 2024 regarding procedural bylaw amendment, Committee of the Whole. Look for a motion to accept the recommendations. Counsel Hand and Counsel Lucely seconds. All in favor? That's carried. And under B, Social Services Division, report dated February 7th, 2024 regarding childcare expansion. Counsel Lucely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I'd like to move that we accept the proposed motion as printed.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Bushy. Discussion. Deputy Warden White.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Received an email this morning prior to the meeting, which I have forwarded over to Ms. Colasanti. Is, is it appropriate now to ask for you to comment on that email? There were some, there were several questions highlighted in that email. And if you're able to respond now, that would be appreciated.
Certainly. I'd actually like to ask that Melissa Fitzpatrick, our manager of homeless prevention and children's services, come up to the front. Just make sure she's able to pull that email up, but yes.
Deputy Warden White, we should clarify who the email's from and the questions, so that the rest of council knows.
Yes, absolutely, Warden Marriott. I was hoping they would just be addressed per question and by, by a staff person, but the Jenna Simpson from Lampton Childcare Advocates had sent in three questions as follows. How does the county expect to attract an operator when existing operators did not apply for the expansion RFP in summer 2023? Building a new facility does not address the fact that the numbers don't add up, and there is currently a childcare facility at Lampton Meadowview Villa right now that is not operating at capacity. And the third point or question involves what is the timeline that the county would consider itself a last resort? Highlighting the fact that municipal-run childcare is a last resort when there aren't third-party operators to fill the void.
Thank you. Melissa, please.
Through you, Warden, to the counselor. So I'll answer your questions in order that you, that they were posed in the email, referencing the operator in the summer who replied to our RFP. They in fact did opt into Canada-wide early learning childcare agreement. So I'm not sure why there was that misunderstanding. Recognizing it did take time for that agreement to be signed and the RFP to close, that perhaps the, the public made an assumption that they did not opt into Seawell, but in fact, they did. In terms of being, not being at capacity at our current childcare in Petrolia, unfortunately, we are seeing that across the county. We're at about 77% operating capacity. We have made tremendous gains since entering into pandemic recovery. We, initially, we were about 60% capacities, and now we're up to about 77%. So it is taking some time. Most of the reduction in capacity was due to workforce shortages, unfortunately, with staff leaving the sector through the pandemic. But as I mentioned, we are making, we're making gains. The, the operating capacity is returning. But concurrently, we also have to work toward meeting our directed growth target of adding new spaces. So it's not, we have to do both at the same time. We continue to recruit, retain, attract new staff to the sector. At the same time, we want to start building new spaces so that by the end of 2026, we, we've met our growth target. The third question was as, in regards to what do we consider last resort? So that statement is correct. The province of Ontario prefers we, in fact, we have to consider nonprofit childcare operators first before we would look at municipally run. To date, we've approved 250 new spaces, so that's just in our first year of our growth plan. So from my perspective, we are making significant progress toward our growth target. It is going to take time. We have until 2026 to meet our target of 573 spaces. So from my perspective, we're not there yet. We continue to have weekly or daily conversations with our nonprofit sector. They're very eager. They're very willing to expand and grow childcare. Right now, the biggest barrier is lack of capital.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Counselor Lucely, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It's, it's just a comment. I think there's, the point of this motion is there's definitely a need to move forward to get this done in the future. And I strongly think because of the demand in the area, we need to do this. And I think the location is an excellent location. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to deal with the motion on the floor? Counsel Bradley?
Can I just ask on the location issue? And I'm not arguing it's not a good location. Was there a look at other possible locations, strategic locations beyond just this one?
Ms. Patrick, please.
Through you, Warden, to the counselor. I mean, certainly, in terms of location, we looked at our directed growth approach. So which neighborhoods we need the childcares in. We've made significant progress in the city of Sarnia through our nonprofit and for-profit operators. The remaining, NS Gillen and the town of Petrolia remains greatest waitlist, highest need. And in terms of value for money, it's, it's county-owned land that we wouldn't have to purchase. So we would co-locate with Lampton Meadowview Villa. The land is at no charge, so it would be the cost of the capital versus if we went in other locations, that we would have to purchase the land.
No other questions or comments? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you again, Ms. Patrick. So item 16BB, report dated February 7th regarding childcare and early-year service system plan. It's a five-year plan. How would you like to deal with this? Counselor Sagman.
Yes, I'd move the recommendation in the report, that we approve the early-year service plan.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Lucely. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Brings us to item number 17, Committee of the Whole minutes. Because this is our first recognition of minutes from Committee of the Whole. We can do this different. Since all members of council were there that day, we can accept the motion to receive and file the Committee of the Whole minutes. Counsel Broad and Counsel Case, all in favor? That's carried. And item number 18, items tabled from previous meetings. Do we have a motion to lift both items? Counsel Broad? Have a seconder? Counsel Bushy? All in favor? That's carried. The two motions that we've lifted. Yeah, so we have motions dealing with those, so we can receive and file. The second one, yes. So motion to receive and file, the second one. Counsel Broad and Counsel Cook, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Counselor Bradley, please.
Just a suggestion on procedure, if it needs to be amended. What we've started doing in the city in the last few years, when we hear a presentation, we then jump to the report on the agenda, so people don't have to sit here. Not that it's not pleasant to be here, not that they don't have to sit here for a couple of hours to hear what the outcome is. So maybe you want to adjust it, because it's a lot easier to deal with the issue with expression of our minds than the people who've just been there. Just a thought for change the rules of order in the future.
Thank you. So we have notice of motion on number 19, notice of motion, Counsel Ferguson provided notice of motion on January the 8th. Counsel Ferguson, would you like to speak to this?
It's just very basic, is that when you look at the city of Toronto, if you read the, the whole report in there, they did set a precedent with the province uploading some of the highways that they downloaded in previous years. We should be asking for the same thing here for the major highways going through here, such as 79, 80, 21 Highway.
So considering the wide scale of this, we could actually deal with this now if we have a majority that feels, don't want to do that. If, if, it would be, it would work, yes. Yeah, moved by Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counsel Bradley. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any? That's unanimous. And item number 20, other business. Is there any other business before this fine body? Deputy Warden White.
I just, I wanted to say hello to Counselor Veen, who's been on screen all morning with us, doing a lot of work, paying attention on a screen while we've, we've had a long meeting here, and I, I miss him. He's usually sitting beside me, so I just wanted to acknowledge him today. He's been with us the whole time.
Just want to recognize he's had surgery and he's recuperating, so it was good he was able to join us. Any other business? Seeing none, number 21, notice of bylaws. Ms. Legay, please.
Thank you, Warden. It is moved by Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Hand, that bylaws 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of 2024, as circulated, be taken as read for a first and second time.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
And it is moved by Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Hand, that bylaws 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of 2024, as circulated, be taken as read a third and final time.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Brings us to 24 adjournment. The next meeting will be, regular meeting and budget deliberations will be held Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, within camera, set to commence at 9:00 AM. Look for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Case and Counsel Lucely, all those in favor? That's carried. Please join me in the singing of "Oh, Canada."
Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Hand, that bylaw is one.
Our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O'Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. O'Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O'Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
And for those on the.